Good morning. It's April 29, 2025. It's a little bit after nine. You're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to welcome you. We're going to get started by saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you please remain standing, Pastor Lonny Skiles from Big Valley Grace will give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every heart.
I'll read briefly just out of Psalms. It says, "Sing to the Lord with thanksgiving; sing praises to our God on the lyre, who covers the heavens with clouds, who provides rain for the earth, who makes great grass to grow on the mountains. He gives to the beast its food and to the young ravens which cry. He does not delight in the strength of the horse, nor does he take pleasure in the legs of man. The Lord favors those who fear him, those who wait for his loving kindness." Psalm 147. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, how lo it be your name, or there is none that is like you! With your outstretched arms you have spoken words, you made all that we see, the big and the small. Nothing is too difficult for you. You are the one who does the things that others would consider to be impossible. Nothing limits you. You are ever present. You hold us in your hands, and we look for the day when we see you face to face. Thank you, Father, for the men that serve us here today. Thank you for their sacrifice. Would you bless they and their families and their businesses? Lord, would you prosper them and strengthen them? I know the burdens that they carry are greater than even what they carry here for our county. But as they sit before us and as they seek to serve us or represent us, would you give them wisdom that comes from you? Lord, would you direct their steps? Would you give them superior insight, supernaturally even, on the most difficult issues of our day? Would you lead them today? For would you give us peace in our community? Lord, would your righteousness prevail, for it blesses us all. So we give you praise for the beautiful day you've given to us, for the opportunities we have here today to serve you. Again, Lord, would your presence be here today, and would you lead and direct these men in the decisions they make today? And we give you the praise and thanksgiving in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor, for that prayer. First up, we have two presentations. We have an update from the Carnegie Arts Center of Turlock. Lisa McNermet, Executive Director.
Good morning.
Morning.
Did I get my slides? There we go. Well, good morning. Thank you so much for inviting me back, or accepting my request to come back. It's always a pleasure to come before this board with an update. Supervisor Kieso and I were just chatting a minute ago and reminded me that coming up this November, it will be 20 years since the disastrous fire that destroyed the original Carnegie Library Building in Turlock and resulted in the beautiful Carnegie Arts Center that we now operate in downtown Turlock. We're entering the 14th year of our exhibition seasons, and I'm excited to share some of our recent activities and accomplishments. For those of you who may not be as familiar with the Carnegie Arts Center as Supervisor Kieso and I are, let me introduce you quickly to what we do. In advancing our mission to be a regional gathering place for vibrant engagement with the arts, we promote creative activity in all formats. Our galleries exhibit art from around the world and from just around the corner. Our educational programs are entertaining and reach out to all ages and interests. Wherever possible, we try to link different art forms together through classes, lectures, concerts, films, poetry readings, and family activities. We want everyone in our community to feel welcome and to join us to experience the arts. Our attendance and participation numbers have remained steady. So this past year, we saw a huge jump in class enrollments, almost 50% higher students attending classes this year than last. With the expansion of our ceramics program, which has classes for children and adults, we are excited to be welcoming many, many more students. Our facility rentals, you see, we had 72 facility rentals last year, and that's families, community groups, organizations, businesses, all throughout the county, which brings in guests for all kinds of events. We continue to expand the programs on our calendar, balancing our many youth activities with more and more programs for our adult audiences. Our fall exhibition in 2023, I go back this far because I think that was about the last time I was here, and it's an important exhibition that we did in the fall of 2023. We brought in a traveling exhibition of works by African-American artists selected from a single private collection. This exhibition included works from the Harlem Renaissance period of the 1920s up through some works created just within the last decade. It was a beautiful and meaningful show that touched on many important themes and was visited and well-received by 1,300 school students who came on field trips. Following that, we had another important exhibition for us, the Valley Focus Exhibition in 2024. And this is an annual exhibition slot that focuses on Central Valley artists. And in 2024, it focused on the work of Richard Gomez, who is a Turlock native, who now teaches art at UC Merced, and he is a well-respected muralist. The exhibition included paintings from his entire career, but most importantly, included a site-specific mural in the gallery, which you can see on the lower section of the slide. It was 50 feet long and took up the entire back wall of our main gallery. And this was a real first for us in many ways. The mural for this exhibition was created with money from a grant from the Heartland Creative Corps, which was a program of the California Arts Council in 2024 that was designed to employ local artists on community projects. This grant was $96,000, by far the largest that the CAC has ever received, and it supported not just one, but two mural projects. The grant paid for an outdoor mural in downtown Turlock, which Gomez completed with two assistants, and that was dedicated in September of 2023 with a community celebration that brought more than 200 people downtown for a classic car show and live music. But the grant also covered the creation of the mural you saw in the exhibition, a process that Richard worked, that included Richard working with students from Rosaline High School in Turlock to develop the ideas and the imagery for the project, and then they came in and actually participated in painting the mural. As we've been doing for many years, our summer exhibitions are all about regional artists. The Youth Art Show, Ready Set Show, livens up the galleries in June, and that's followed by the Carnegie Arts Showcase, which is an open juried competition that runs in July and August every year. Together, these two exhibitions are a great opportunity for all of the creatives in our community to come together and be celebrated. Our fall exhibition in 2024, which closed in December, was a show of works made entirely out of reclaimed and recycled materials. Artists working with Recology, which is San Francisco's waste management company, create sculptures, paintings, photographs, prints, and mixed media pieces that bring important topics to life for everyone. Topics like consumer culture, recycling and the environment, and what may be considered disposable, whether it is things, or people, or histories and memories. Our volunteer docents had amazing conversations in the gallery with more than 1,500 students in grades three through 12. One of my favorite field trips that semester was with students from De Nair High School's Environmental Club, who came to the art museum for the first time and had a great experience. All of the students on the field trip also visit our art studio for a hands-on art lesson, creating their own work of art from recycled cardboard and magazines. I focus on the field trip program because it continues to be a highlight every year. And we're fortunate now, with grants from the Boyette Foundation's Make Dreams Real Fund, we're working to bring more of our region's rural and lower-income schools to participate. The grant covers the costs for more outreach, for school buses, and for participation fees for schools that have a high percentage of low-income students. In the past two years, we've had schools from throughout the county participate, including Turlock, Modesto, Seres, Newman, Houston, Patterson, and Empire. Grant funding from the Boyette Foundation for more outreach and field trip support was just renewed for a third year, so we will continue to extend the reach of this opportunity to as many schools as we can. If you know people at the schools in our smaller communities, please let them know. A new program that we added came from an endowed gift from the Ralph Shabazian Trust, which supports the presentation of international music. In the spring of 2024, we put on our very first annual concert featuring music from around the world with traditional Armenian music performed by the Keftime Legacy Band of Fresno. Quinsave, a band from Salinas that plays cumbia and other Latin music styles, just performed the second annual concert in the series just a few weeks ago. Our Board of Directors took a major step in 2024 with the adoption of a new three-year strategic plan. The pillars of the plan are engagement, collaboration, and stewardship. The areas of engagement and collaboration are tied to our mission of serving our regional community by expanding our programs and our audiences, and by establishing more enriching partnerships. In the area of stewardship, we are looking at not just financial sustainability, but also managing the needs of our beautiful facility and building leadership capacity in the board and the staff. Currently on view in our gallery is another of our annual Valley Focus Exhibitions, celebrating 10 years of this exhibition series this spring. And each year, we're looking for important and interesting artists and themes that are working in our region. This exhibition this year features the work of 12 emerging artists, all of them age 35 or younger, all with distinct styles and perspectives, and all with ties to the Central Valley. They live in Fresno, Sacramento, Murphy's, Merced, Oakdale, Modesto, and Turlock, and they work in painting, sculpture, ceramics, drawing, printmaking, photography, and mixed media. As you can imagine, this is a show full of energy and fresh ideas, and I hope you all make time to see it before it closes on May 17. I just want to remind you, it's only 15 miles from downtown Modesto to downtown Turlock. So follow us on social media, check out our website, join our email list, and we hope to see you at the Carnegie soon. There's lots to do and see all year long. We have our annual block party coming up on June 14, which is a free community event funded by the City of Turlock Community Events and Activities Fund, and we are holding a fundraiser on May 9. I would love to talk more about that, but I'm not going to bore you with fundraising. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the years past, the years ahead, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions?
Could you just give a quick history of, because of the fire, and how it came to be the new Carnegie Arts Center?
Sure. So our, part of our building was constructed in 1916, which was Turlock's first public library, funded by a gift from Andrew Carnegie, thus the Carnegie Arts Center name. People always ask about that. And it was the library until 1968, when the city and the county moved the library over to the location on Minaret Street where it now is. The building was a community center for a few years, and then gradually, artists are notorious for this, became the home of the Turlock City Arts Commission about 1983, where it served as a place for exhibitions and classes, and was operated under the auspices of the City of Turlock's Recreation Department. I joined the Carnegie staff as the staff person in the fall of 2001, and we were working on raising money to bring the 1916 building into compliance with ADA requirements. We started construction on a project to add an elevator and new handicap-accessible restrooms in 2004, but that was all brought up short in 2005, November, the night before Thanksgiving in 2005, when miscreants broke in through the construction site and set the building on fire. The recovery from that was a long, drawn-out process, but it included three years of community meetings and planning with our architects, with the city council, with our, with our building and facilities staff at the City of Turlock, and a lot of community input and support and continued funding. Luckily, we got plans in place to not just restore the historic building, but to expand it. So now we are four times the size that we were in 2005, 2005, when we had the fire. The, the plans for that were estimated to cost $7.5 million, but in 2009, in the middle of the Great Recession, the bids came in at 2,000, $2.5 million. The city had enough money to cover the costs, but they didn't want to pay the operating costs. So the nonprofit Carnegie Arts Center Foundation wrote a business plan, took the money that they had been raising to help with the construction costs, and put that into an operations fund and an endowment fund. And now, the Arts Center Foundation has been operating the Carnegie on a lease from the City of Turlock since 2011, and currently, our endowment stands at about $2.5 million, and we operate on a budget of about $450,000 a year, most of it coming from community contributions, sponsorships, memberships, things like that. Good?
That was a good history lesson.
That was the fastest I've ever done that, let me tell you.
It comes back to the redevelopment. It was an opportunity with redevelopment. The City of Turlock did a great job.
Yeah, redevelopment and capital facilities fees and generosity from the community's donors.
Yeah, very good. So we've had, I'm not sure if three of the board members were on, but we had board retreat there when I was chair, but I think it was the time before you came on. We've done, I've done government nights there. It's got a great venue, a larger, obviously, where you had the music. But we talk about jewels of the county and what the cultural jewels we have. You have the Gala Arts Center. We know the Children's Museum here in Modesto. This is one of those cultural things that is lifelong learning. I always think of libraries, because that's originally what it was, but this is more, it's not a library anymore. What it is, is a cultural center where you can, you can paint, you can, you know, you can work on ceramics, you can do other things. And so I know that it looks like there's a lot of kids, but this is for adults, too. So I don't know if anyone's been down to Turlock, but it is truly a jewel of the valley, for sure. And I appreciate you coming in today, Lisa.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Great presentation. Next up is Stanislaus Family Justice Center Services and Outcomes. Lisa Montero Moore, Executive Director.
A different kind of jewel of the valley.
Morning, Lisa.
Good morning. Thank you. It's really an honor to be here today. Oh, there it is. So make sure I do the clicker part correctly. Again, my name is Lisa Montero Moore. I'm the Executive Director of the Stanislaus Family Justice Center. It's a privilege to be here today, but it's also kind of like a family moment, if you will, because all of you have been to the center at different points in time. Jody used to come to the center before you were in this role. You have, in your previous role, in supporting our activities there, and each of the supervisors, both in their personalized and in the professionalized, have come to the center, supporting our clients. And so I appreciate the chance to be here today to represent the center to you all. This is the 15th year of our service. Joining me today, I think, is Steve Rank, our board chair. He's somewhere behind me, I believe, as well, like, as well as District Attorney Jeff Leggero. Again, this is our 15th year of service. I just don't think I put much thought into the 15th year until I was getting ready for this presentation, because it seems like it was just yesterday. We navigated this process for the last 15 years, but again, it was yesterday when I stood before this body, a different number of individuals here at the body at that time, trying to put our Stanislaus Family Justice Center to work and putting it in place in our community. And here we are today, 15 years later, and I'm just so proud to be able to take this moment to thank the county, the staff, the board, and a number of people who are in the audience who have helped bring us to this point. We have made a place for ourselves and our community, providing quality wraparound services to our community in collaboration and partnership with Stanislaus County. Margaret Mead once said, "Never believe that a few caring people can't change the world, for indeed it's all who ever have." We at the Family Justice Center live by those words. We are always trying to help the people that are in need. As wraparound services, we are there for the people that come to us, maybe not knowing what they need when they get there, but helping them find the path they want to go to. The Family Justice Center is a partnership with the District Attorney's Office, our law enforcement, behavioral health, social services, victim services, and our nonprofit agencies, and we're all working to change the world and our community for the better. I want to share with you a couple of moments of people who have come to our center for service. These are a few examples of the many that come to us, but it certainly helps resonate for me when I'm listening to a presentation of the people that we're making change for. We have Frederick. He is a male client. He has two young children sharing the custody with his ex-wife. He was growing concerned that the mother was increasingly struggling from alcohol abuse and when the children were in her care. During a recent attempt to bring the children back to her for custody time, she was clearly inebriated, unable to care for her children. She came out to greet the father, who was visually impaired. He kept the children and attempted to leave. He got in his car. She followed him, created quite a scene, had a very distressing disturbance in front of the children, and he suffered a number of injuries on that. With the assistance of the center, he was granted a temporary emergency custody order and currently has sole custody of the children. I emphasize Frederick's situation because we have people, male and female, that come to the center. It's not limited to one gender or the other. Then we have Elaine, an 18-year-old college student dating a man for several months. She was probably on their third or fourth date when she was raped on her way to dinner. She immediately went to her friend's house. The friend encouraged her to report to law enforcement, and law enforcement referred her to the District Attorney's Office, and then they assisted us in connecting with her for a DVTRO restraining order, and we worked with the District Attorney's Office to have criminal investigative, excuse me, criminal charges placed against the offender, and he is currently in custody. So I give some different examples of how our collaborative efforts with law enforcement and the District Attorney's Office really make a difference in the people we're serving, helping to connect those services. The purpose of the Family Justice Center is to provide lifesaving solutions through partnerships that I just shared with you. We're a place and a movement. We wrap victims in safety, and we continue to eradicate violence from our community. We're not going to rest until the violence, every victim of violence receives the services, love, and compassion they deserve. Our challenge is, like our community, is violence threatens the quality of our community. It destroys families, affects the children in their homes. In 2023, and this is the most recent number provided to us, we had 2,748 domestic violence-related calls for assistance to law enforcement. Of those called, 9% of those involve strangulation or suffocation. And that number only reflects 9% because many individuals, agencies, law care providers don't even know how to record a strangulation case. It's believed to be a much larger number, but our folks do the best they can with the information they have. And 45% of those involve the weapon. The Family Justice Center collaborates with our partner agencies to mitigate these crippling effects of trauma and bring healing to our victims and inspire restoration of hope. And to make all this happen is our partners. And our partners, the Family Justice Center, our goal for the entire 15 years is to provide services with our partner agencies under one roof: District Attorney, Behavioral Health Recovery Services, the Stanislaus County Care Center, Community Services Agency, CPS, the Sheriff's Office, and our nonprofit partners, The Haven Without Permission. They are tremendous partners. They are there every step of the way. Whatever way we can be creative to assist those that are in need, we try to come to that. Sometimes things come before us that we weren't expecting, or maybe don't have a rule in the rulebook on how we're going to handle it, but working with each of our partners, we're able to come to those conclusions, to provide information to our clients, to help them make better informed decisions and keep their families safe. Our partnerships lead to different outcomes. For our statistical purposes of the, our work with the Family Justice Center, it's really important for us to be able to take note of all the different services we provide to individuals through our partnership agreement with the county and our co-located partners. To give you some reference, in 2024, we provided unique client services to 1,157 individuals. That includes crisis intervention for 195 unique clients, civil legal services for 166 unique clients, which actually results to 1,290 client meetings. We have one attorney, just for reference point. It's a lot of hours. Victim advocacy for 511 unique clients, our care center interviews, which are managed by county CPS, who do an amazing job with their staff and their partners, 150 children, and our counseling and support services provided by BAHRS and our other providers, 331 children, provided services. But for a reference point, as I keep referencing, that we're at our 15-year mark, I want to share with you, do a little bit of homework on this. In the 15 years the Stanislaus County Family Justice Center has been in our county, been a part of our downtown, we have provided services to over 9,000 children in our history, and we provided over 20,000 services to adults in that 15-year timeframe. It's really a large number when you think about it. When we're looking at the day-to-day individuals, you're not thinking about the big numbers in the end. Our clients are so important and really make up the demographics of our communities. Most of our clients are Hispanic and mostly victims of domestic violence, and in 2024, we served 399 children and 11, 1,117 adult victims. Our services are available with English and Spanish, although we make arrangements for any other translation services that need to be available of our staff. 80% of our staff are Latinas that are Spanish-speaking. The ability for our clients to converse comfortably with our staff, and the children to come in and converse comfortably with our staff in Spanish is a tremendous resource for our community, and they really do break down the barriers for those that are looking for services. Our core, our core services have only increased since our days opening over on the corner of 1625 I Street. And under our roof, we have crisis intervention, victim advocacy, safety planning, a kid zone, counseling for both adults and children, shelter assistance, criminal investigations, legal assistance, and forensic child interviews. And that's just on a daily basis. A number of anything, other things could occur, depending on what the situation requires. What you see in that photo there is a family engagement night, where families come once a month to learn how to communicate with their children, with adults, and then in a group setting, and trying to just make it a socially appropriate evening so families can enjoy their time together. In addition to the work we provide in-house, we have a number of other supportive services. I'm tremendously proud of our Camp Hope America program, which I'll talk about in a moment. We also have a trauma services support unit, and this is really remarkable, considering the number of individuals that need mental health, clinical services, and we provide that to the adults at our center through our TSSU program that's funded through an individual grant by a, a private nonprofit partner. And the services provided allow for our clients to receive services, both English and in Spanish, for clinical services. We have case management provided by our navigators, navigational services. Our youth services, our clients meet each week with our youth staff for art therapy programming and to help them better engage in their lives and learn to have a, more of a heal from the trauma they've had. As I mentioned, our family engagement. We're very proud of Solanday. We do it in collaboration with a number of employees of the District Attorney's Office who really bring it on during July, when I know Supervisor Withrow has seen Solanday in action as he's across the street. But we have about 125 clients and their kids come in. They get backpacks, haircuts, freshened up for the school year, and it's all provided by volunteers in the community. It's really quite remarkable, and the number of businesses that come to volunteer their time, it's really extraordinary. So I'll send you all a note when we do that in July. Plus, our direct client support. We do reach out to our clients on a regular basis. We had a recent client situation that I won't articulate on the mic here as the case is developing, but they needed immediate emergency services in the past two weeks as they were assaulted, and our staff were able to come out with gift bags and care information for them while they were navigating the legal course. Also very proud of our regional and statewide advocacy. When I did this 15 years ago, there were a few family justice centers, maybe 15 total, but now our Family Justice Center is one of 27 in the state of California, and we've actually created the California Family Justice Network. We know that to advocate for what we do and the movement we have is we have to have our own voice, and I'll rely on that of others. Of the 27 FJC's in California, 17 are district attorney-led, with 10 of them being led by nonprofits, similar to the situation we have. Each of them match the community they serve, and they've, 15 of them have been around for the 12- to 15-year mark in the last seven, probably in operation within the last seven years. We continually take our opportunities to meet with our legislators in Sacramento, and I'm proud to say that all the legislators representing in Stanislaus County have been very supportive of our efforts and in tune to what our needs are here as victim services in the Valley. Camp Hope America, one of my favorite programs. It is something that we're part of a national movement for Camp Hope America. It's providing trauma-informed curriculum for children and youth, just 14 and under, exposed to victims of family violence. And we have navigated Camp Hope America through a number of different resources over the years. When I first started doing this, we used to take the kids to hours away drive to Kidder Creek and other really faraway locations. Then we had that thing, COVID happened, and boy, that was camping with kids with masks on outside, day camping. It was, we did it, but it wasn't easy. And then we came across an opportunity that we really hoped for that probably came to be, and that would be Camp Taylor. We host Camp Hope America at Camp Taylor. Last year was our first year, and I can't tell you enough about the success it was. For Stanislaus County, to have this amazing program in a backyard, revitalizing that ground there on the west side is amazing. It's a beautiful facility, as you all know. But to be able to have, in theory, the Camp Taylor kids are there because they have heart and trauma issues to their body. We have kids who have trauma and emotional issues. So being able to go to that really healthy site is really important for the young people that we serve. And so in order to make it rewarding, affordable, and as big an experience as we can, I've been working with our regional FJC's to encourage them to come to our camp. Let's quit driving six or seven miles away to a camping experience. Let's come where Stanislaus County has the best of the best at Camp Taylor. So this year, we have a regional Camp Hope program, including Sacramento and San Joaquin's FJC's. The Sacramento FJC is a nonprofit. The San Joaquin FJC is DA-led, but in both cases, they have dedicated their kids for the Camp Hope Experience in June of this year. So we have a regional Camp Hope Experience, helps cut our costs and gives our kids a more robust program, and I am just so excited about this. It's going to be fantastic. As we look to 2025, we have a number of goals we've set for ourselves in trying to increase the services we provide. the services we provide. And this collaboration with the district attorney's office to strengthen the human trafficking and diversion programs with the FJC is tremendous. Through Prop 47 funding, we have the chance to really make a difference in the lives of these individuals in that program. So the services are being provided onsite at the FJC. We're utilizing our facility. We have the victims of trafficking who need this program, who are signed up for it, coming into our center every day for these services. And I can have the DA speak more specifically about the success of that. But in the two months that we've been doing this robustly, I am so motivated and encouraged by the individuals coming through because not only are they coming through for the program they intended for, they're allowing us to navigate them and assist them with their legal issues as well. So in several cases, we provided restraining orders and other types of legal assistance to those individuals that may result in their record expungement, or specifically in their own dynamics in their household, or removing them from the victim status. In addition, we are continuing to work with our trafficking victims to be creative in ways that we can provide service to them. We have also been working more robustly with our elder abuse programming for advocacy for the elder abuse. Although elder abuse has always been a tenet of the Family Justice Center, it's a little harder to get that population to come to the center looking for services. But I think with our more recent multidisciplinary team and some additional trainings, we think we're on to something to have more elder abuse situations come to the center, providing restraining orders for those elders in need or being taken advantage of. And we're continuing to highlight the fact that we have wraparound services, including legal for all victims of abuse. The legal services program is really crucial to what we do because our victims need that type of protection. When we opened the doors fifteen years ago, we thought maybe we need legal. We had no idea that we would really need legal. We started that initially with a part-time attorney volunteering their hours back then to now we have a full-time attorney very capable of the goals we work on and assisting our clients. Our trauma services support unit, as I mentioned, does our clinical services. We have over forty-six active clients in that program. They receive tremendous healthcare opportunities, and the narrative exposure therapy that they're provided is significant. We also had the opportunity this past fall to provide training to clinicians in San Joaquin County, both English-speaking and Spanish-speaking, to provide additional folks with that net therapy exposure training to use as clinicians that are available to us and to the community. What I really want to remind you is the Family Justice Center matters. The Family Justice Center of Stanislaus is making a positive change that matters as we partner with Stanislaus County. We're striving for the best. We thank the board for the continued support and the willingness to visit the center and make a difference. We thank the district attorney's office, his staff, for being tremendous partners to us and remembering that we're there to help them as we help the people in the community doing the same thing. Our partners have been tremendous advocates for us as we work together for the same goals of improving our community. So I ask the board supervisors today and our fifteen-year mark, continue to remember us where we've gone and where we're going and just happy to be here. I thank you for your time today, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any questions? Calmer.
Just real quick, you're a great neighbor, Lisa. Great presentation here. And I say every year, you're my weekend partner. We always see each other down there on weekends working, and the hard work that you do and your staff, what you guys do is amazing down there. It's always so hard as I walk by there all day long, every day, it seems like as I come back and forth here, and I see the individuals, the family members coming in and out, and you can just see the pain on their faces. You know, it just, and I just walk by, and I just, you guys are there making a difference, really changing these people's lives and helping them get through these situations that they're in. So I just, you know, my heart goes out to you and all the people you guys work with and your staff, and I thank you so much. You're doing the Lord's work, and I just appreciate all the hard work you do.
Thanks, Supervisor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Lisa. Great presentation, and thank you for all the work that you guys do. It makes a difference.
I appreciate that. I didn't know if DA Leggero had anything to add.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council Boz. It's a great pleasure to be here to sing the praises of the Family Justice Center and join Lisa at the podium here. They're a fantastic partner. And we have two embedded DA investigators at Family Justice Center, and we have another investigator that splits her time between the Family Justice Center and the heat team, the human trafficking team out of the Sheriff's Department. We also have an advocate, a victim advocate, that falls under the elder abuse program, and they are all working closely with the Family Justice Center and the resources available there. What's really special about the Family Justice Center is the outcomes are much better because we have a Family Justice Center. We have this one-stop shop where victims can go. They have a better, less traumatic experience when they're going through this type of abuse, and they need resources. So by having this one-stop shop, the victims are getting better service, which means that our prosecution and our cases are better because we have better outcomes from the interviews and the resources that they're receiving that allows them to want to continue with the prosecution because they don't have to worry about a lot of things that are happening in their lives. They're getting the support they need, the wraparound services, and they're able to participate in the prosecution. So for that, I thank Lisa, all the amazing work that she and the Family Justice Center team are doing. They've been a great partner for many, many years. We're very excited about the 2025 goals and looking forward to advancing our human trafficking diversion programs. That's a grant that is allowing us to collaborate without permission, as well as the Family Justice Center, to make sure that sex-trafficked and labor-trafficked individuals are able to get resources, try and get them out of that lifestyle and help them move forward with their lives and divert them out of the criminal justice system. We're also very excited for the increase in elder abuse work that is going to be taking place. Our elder abuse advocate is working closely with Family Justice Center to make sure that they have the resources from our office to start helping those individuals that find themselves in a financial abuse or physical abuse situation when they're elderly that we're able to help them get out of that situation as well. And lastly, I visited Camp Taylor, the Camp Hope program, out of Camp Taylor last year. I cannot say enough about that program. What a fantastic program. The kids are thriving in that program, and any support that we can give to Camp Hope, Camp Taylor, and the Family Justice Center is well worth it. The dividends that we're being repaid are immense. So thank you for the time. Thank you again to Lisa for all the work that she's done. I really appreciate it. Any questions? Happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais, and so it is fair for everyone's, so that it is fair for everyone, keep comments to five minutes so that everybody has a chance to speak. First up is Astrid Zuniga.
Good morning, Astrid.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Hope everybody's doing well. For the audience, my name is Astrid Zuniga, and I am the president of United Domestic Workers, AFSMI Local 3930, and we represent here in Stanislaus County about 8,000 home care providers across the county. And I am here to remind you all that we are more than just workers. We are the heart of this community. Our children attend schools here in Stanislaus County. We pray in the houses of Stanislaus County. We shop at local businesses. We coach our students who play in the sports teams, and our children play in the parks here in Stanislaus County. We are deeply rooted here, and the work we do is just as essential. As you all approve the recognition of Older Americans Month and others, let me also remind you that our care allows those folks the freedoms to live in these communities and thrive, especially to those low-income seniors and people with disabilities. It allows them to live at home with dignity and respect. Yet, year after year, when I come to the table, we are met with disrespect when it comes to wages and benefits. We make $17.75 an hour. A living wage is maybe $28 an hour, and that was a study done a few years ago. And yet, we continue to come to the table in good faith to try to reach a fair agreement. But what continues to be brought to the table to us is nowhere near. It is downright disrespectful, and we've been told that we are nowhere near where you all and your team want to be, that our wage expectations don't match the county's reality. Let me tell you our reality. Our reality is the reality of being nurses, cooks, chefs, confidants, carers of your community's most vulnerable. That is our reality, and that should be matched with decent wages and benefits, not the proposals of pennies and cuts. However, you know, this program is a critical part of Stanislaus County's infrastructure. Your mission and vision is about the health and safety of your community, and we help to provide that, and it should be respected. You all have pretty healthy budget, and I think it's time to recognize the workers that do this work in your community by giving them a decent wage and benefit proposal. Our members are strong. We work 24 hours. They give a 24-hour, and it's only 10 hours. But I can tell you, I have seen 1,250 today. I have seen 120 today. I have seen 230 today. I've seen 310, 450, and then guess what? I'm just up for the day and still taking care of my son and doing what I have to do for the day. This is our reality, and I ask that you all please consider that. We are strong, and we are watching to see if you meet the expectations and the reality of our people and our members and those that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Astrid. Next up is Ron McMurtry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron McMurtry here. Okay. On the afternoon of Thursday, May 9th of last year, the police appeared at my home to serve a search warrant and arrest me. Some of you may have heard and some haven't. This is the proper time to correct the record about these false criminal charges. It is said that rumor can get halfway around the world before the truth can ever get its boots on. For almost 12 years, I have been an editor of a fine art history website. A couple years ago, a badly-trained AI internet algorithm, most likely Shadow Dragon, generated a criminal lead to the authorities with instances from the website in a biased way. Many times in the past, law enforcement has taken a closer look of past complaints and determined that there were no grounds for legal action. But this time, Modesto Police Detectives, through what can generously be called shoddy investigative work, were instructed to search my home and arrest me. I'm not surprised that they don't have the subject expertise to know the difference between art and pornography, but there were many red flags that should have called for caution. Instead, they needlessly squelched my legitimate attempts at education and debate in a rarefied field supposedly guaranteed by the First Amendment. This came completely by surprise, yet I knew there was nothing I could do at the time but be patient and handle this in court. Adding insult to injury, the police published my arrest, and the Modesto Bee repeated this insult despite my history of being a law-abiding citizen. Only lately did I discover that the police outright lied in their press release, and that will be the main basis for a pending lawsuit for defamation. Naturally, the news spread around, and given the nature of the charges, parents were understandably freaked out. I knew it was useless to reason with them at that time. I felt it made sense for time to pass and then correct the record later. Also, I couldn't be sure that I would find a lawyer and a court system capable of handling my case justly. It was almost miraculous that I not only found a lawyer who is actually an artist himself, but discovered an MJC professor who could serve as an expert witness. I was pleasantly surprised that only about half of my clients abandoned me and a few more resumed at the beginning of the following school year. I'm currently at about two-thirds capacity and am lucky that I can still make a living teaching. Those who remain loyal were kind enough to spread the love and help sign up new clients. I am reaching out now because most people tend to accept the police account over my own reputation and character. Now that my charges were officially dismissed on March 7th, it makes sense for me to speak out now with at least some evidence indicating my innocence. It has been emotionally difficult realizing what some people must have been thinking about me these past months. I have been making an appeal to former clients to, one, stop spreading rumors that I'm some sort of creep; two, help with contact tracing to discover who else knows and needs to be updated; and three, hopefully help remedy things by referring new clients to me once again. At the time, I was just about to raise my rates, so with inflation, legal expenses, and being at two-thirds capacity, this has been an economic challenge, forcing me to postpone various classroom and personal projects. In order to increase my hours, I have been tutoring English for little kids, which has been rewarding, more rewarding than I expected. Although I can sue the police, they can't be compelled to repair my reputation, so I must engage in this publicity campaign to build things up to their previous levels. I want the rumors to be corrected and let new clients judge for themselves the value I bring to their children. Those who really know me understand it is not my nature to cause harm. So in the future, if you ever hear any rumors of criminal behavior or that I have stopped teaching, I advise you not to believe it. I have taken care, on the aforementioned website, never to publish anything disrespectful, illegal, unethical, or immoral, and thus, that site should not have been used to harm respected members of society. I intend to be utterly transparent about this and will entertain sincere inquiries about my work, the website and its subject matter, and my ambitions for the future. As stated, my main complaint is with the Modesto Police Detectives, and that is not the jurisdiction of this body, but many aspects of my case deal with county-level departments. I was an inmate in the county jail, so I will have some feedback in the coming months about the Sheriff's Department, bail bondsman, public defenders, the district attorney's office, and the Superior Court. I would like to thank Amit Behring for trusting me with his children and his assistance in helping me navigate the legal system, and his wife Sandy, who is the closest thing to an angel on earth. I would also like to thank Stephen Morrow for his ability to resist prejudice and be a friend during this trying time. One does really learn who one's friends are at times like this. I'm not too proud to ask for help in the form of advice, connections, or any other tangible or spiritual service that will allow me to move forward in making our society a happier and healthier one. That which doesn't kill you only makes you stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next up is Brian Evatt.
Good morning, you guys.
Morning, Brian.
Boz. Boz is a constitutionalist. I know he knows about it. Anyway, I want to start here. In-home services and elderly people. Now, I'm a senior citizen, too. I went ahead and I turned around and I went into that to take care of an older person because I wanted to learn it because we build care homes here in this county. My mom was an office budman. We had three different care homes, and I helped build them things. But I wanted to help this other one lady that turned around, and she owned Paradise Guest Homes, right? And she got old. Now it was her turn to be helped. So I went down to the IHS. I brought him the paperwork. I didn't sign any of the paperwork, right? Just to find out if the guy knew his own business. Now, he runs it. I guess his name is Jeff. I turn around, I hand him the paperwork, and I stand up back now. Is everything okay? Is it there? He's fibbling through their signature pages on each one of these. He bypasses it. None of it's signed. He doesn't know his job. A girl had to come back and tell him, oh, I'll take care of that for you. Now, I become the caregiver. Now, people break into the lady's house, right? This is what the care people have to go through, right? And now I'm a senior citizen trying to learn why, what they go through, right? So they break into the house. I catch them. I tell the police to go down there. They're breaking into her house. I'm on my route. I'll be there any minute. They let the guy go because he's with a little girl, and these officers are narcissistic, and they like little girls. And you wonder where our kids are going. Well, you've seen that in our Sheriff's Department, which Christians would say, he didn't basically traffic little girls out of Merced and everything, dealing with their mothers and their daughters, right? This is what happens in our county. I don't care, maybe you don't think that I know this, but I've been, my dad's been investigator in this county from the time until he died. And sure, he made some enemies in the Sheriff's Department because the way they think, they think there's two sides to the law, that if you leave the Sheriff's Department and you go to work as an investigator or public defender... you go to work as an investigator or public defender's investigator, as he was chief, that you switch sides. I didn't know there were sides, but these guys go through everything. They could be arrested because the burglar will sit there and say, oh, they threatened me. These in-home care service people threaten them and these cops will turn around and take them in and let the burglars go. This is what's happening. We're, we're reversed around in this state and we have to start here. Each county has to start on their own. Even the state's given you the right to start on your own, even with the marijuana. They said, we'll turn it over to the counties. We'll turn it over to the cities. Let them take care of it. Do you have to follow the rest of the cities or do you have to come up to Calveras and you tell them how they can run dispensaries? Now, all you're doing is creating crime and you're letting them get away with it because of greed. The thing we should focus on is the people that care for other people, the people that do it. We need to train our officers not to be narcissistic, not to run over like they're chasing little girls in high school, because this is what they do. This is for real. Now, I've watched it year after year. I've been in this situation. I'm still in this situation and these people are going to wind up. And this is what you do as senior citizens, right? I'm a senior citizen. You don't protect me. The officers don't protect me. They protect the little girls that make up lies and then you, they give, and the same with her. They give these kids to families that steal and then the kids learn to steal and then they learn to turn around and reverse, which is the Darvo Law. Reverse action, become the victims. If you're caught stealing something, become the victim. Now, this is what we have to watch out for, you know? And you guys got to turn around and learn how to train these officers. Constitutional rights. You guys all watch TikTok. You see what these officers are doing. They're invading your constitutional rights because they don't care, because they're narcissistic, because we don't provide the training. We don't provide the training for the people that run their business, IHSS, so they realize what's happening, so they can come and tell you. It's just overlooked, just paying the money. This is what Trump's trying to stop. This is what Musk is trying to stop. This happens right here in our own little counties. We started up. We don't need to be ruled by Gavin. We don't need to be ruled by any of these people outside. We are not friggin' Democrats that are going to sing la-la songs and everything. That don't get the work done. The work gets done when we start, when we look at the fraud that's around us, when we look at this stuff. My time's up and I appreciate talking to you, but you ought to realize these people out here are involved and he could be arrested, she could be arrested, and all you're doing is shoving more money out. That we just keep on shoving money out. So take care of this, you guys. Here, he's trained in Constitution, Bose.
Mr. Evatt, go ahead and have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, that's the last card I have for public comment. Any other, any others that'd like to get up and make public comment about items not on the agenda? If you would, please just state your name for the record.
Yeah, Wayne Junsou, J-U-N-S-O. I'm an HSS member, even though I don't have the green on today. Red's my favorite color. And you know, it doesn't matter what color we wear. It doesn't matter at all. Anyway, bad morning because we all have to come here and fight for something that should be sort of just automatic. I know you're on a budget, but, you know? Anyway, it's a good morning also. You're human beings. We're human beings. Everybody here is human, so it's a great day. Thank you. So, I'm not done, no. I said thank you, but we're not done. I have been coming here for years telling you to put yourself in my son's position. He's paralyzed from above the navel down. So, check your notes from several years ago, several times, and I'm not going through all that today. I don't know if you heard me the first time. How many of you been in a wheelchair? How many of you put yourself out there in their position and try to do your job? We, we hear over and over from speakers how important IHSS is. I was at a rally last week. I'd say at least a third of the participants were in wheelchair and many people needed guidance and help just getting in and out, coming and leaving. This is daily. This is every day. They say 24/7. We talk about minimum wage. Fast foods gets $20 an hour. You know a car mechanic start at about 150 an hour? And if they work four hours a day, you can do the math. Lawn people, they do your lawn. They mow an edge. Didn't take a great education. Some do a better job than others. They know how to do it. They start about 125 a month. Most of them can do a yard in 45 minutes, half hour, 45 minutes, maybe an hour. Four hours, that's about $33 an hour. Insurance payments for these people, insurance premiums, $800, $1,000. Then you go to the doctor, you got to pay a copay. You got to pay for the doctor. And so don't, don't be cutting the benefits. Don't be cutting the benefits. It's, it's very important to have these benefits. You've heard them say many people put many more hours than they're getting paid for. For example, I, I get paid for about an hour and a half, two hours a day, and I probably put in five hours some days, depending on if he has to go somewhere or this or that or got to clean up the bed, got to clean up the floor because he's pottied, missed the, missed the toilet he had to jump over to from his wheelchair. It, it, it's, I do put more time than, than two hours a day. Now, they talked about respect. I don't know where the notion got it that it's fraud or that we don't do our jobs. My son cares. When he's out in a wheelchair, he'll give money to the homeless. He carries a bag of dog food with him because if they have a dog, he gives them dog food. My son does that. I'm happy to be able to serve him. I'm doing it partly because he didn't have a wife or friends that would take care of him, so he's back home, 48 years old, feels embarrassed that he can't do it himself. I would ask you to respect the IHSSs. We earn our respect every day, all day. I would ask you to respect the IHSS by listening to the negotiators and offering so peanuts. I paid a dollar for a bag of peanuts from the neighbor's yard sale the other day. So, get off the pennies. Get off the pen. Oh, well, I got one more thing to say. I personally ask each of you to search your souls and get over this negotiating time period. We don't need to come here every Tuesday. Anyway, give them a raise. We give you five minutes to tell us why you won't give us a raise. Is that six minutes now? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Any others like to make public comment? Please just state your name for the record.
I've got a long record. My name is Bill Caruso. I'm in your district now. Real quick, Frank Ryan says hello and his daughter's baby's going to be one June 30th. I know you. I know his mom. I've never met your dad. What I'm here is, I'm going to talk about, I want to bring the board's attention to a, a rule, an ordinance relative to fruit stands. The proper term is a produce stand. My brother and I own 13 and three-quarter acres on West Hatch Road. I just rented 10 acres of it for a gentleman who used to be at Sylvan and Claus. The property got sold from under him. They raise cactus for Nopalas and they had their cactus growing there for several years and they lost it and they lost their property. They're renting in Oakdale, so I happened to run across them. So they are renting now and I like to look after my tenants, the ones that rent there and this gentleman, because he's from Mexico. So I told him I was coming down to the county. So I went and talked to the county and I want to go through the ordinances for fruit stands and they're not going to get a, a produce market, but just a fruit stand. And I started going through it with a lady and I'd like to recite the first sentence. It says, "These regulations are intended to encourage the sale of farm products and related goods." That's pretty pertinent to what I'm going to ask. Now, there is a section in here, it's 2D. It says, "The entire parcel is owned or leased by the produce stand proprietor." That means he has to rent the entire parcel? To me, that makes no sense. And I've talked to several friends of mine, they're pretty intelligent, well, most of them are, and they said, "That's ridiculous." And so I got in touch through Casey with Angela Freitas. She said, "Well..." I said, "Look, I know those are your rule and not, you know, you have to abide for those." I says, "But, you know, this doesn't make any sense." She said, "Well, maybe you can sublease the two houses and the two warehouses that are on the property." And I'm thinking, "Well, that's game playing because I don't think the county can tell me what the terms and conditions would be if I rented the property, the two houses and the warehouses." I mean, could I rent it for a dollar a year? That's game playing. I don't want to play games, you know? I want to be straight up with everybody. So what I'm going to be asking, and this is all organic food. He's, he's known, they're no doubt down the state, I think. What I'm asking is the board to look at this and to see if that actually makes sense to promote agriculture. If somebody has to rent an entire parcel, if somebody has, say, 40 acres and they want to rent 10 to somebody, why does that person have to rent the entire parcel? It makes no sense to me. I know they don't want a proliferation of fruit stands. It's what it says here. The one there at Paradise, by the Paradise Post Office, it's done. There's one down Carpenter, it's south of Hatch. It's only there seasonal and so I don't think there's going to be really a proliferation. But I, I'm asking the board to delete that or if there's good reason, and I haven't thought of the good reasons, modify it. Say the person can lease the parcel with the exception of buildings, houses, warehouses, et cetera. I think that'd be an acceptable modification of that. I'm trying to help these people. I look out for them. I don't want him to take over the entire property because I tell my tenants there in the houses, "You're going to stay here as long as you pay the rent and you take care of the place. Don't worry." These people are afraid. They lost three properties in one month, February, one in Oakdale, one up there at Claus and Sylvan, and one in Turlock. All of a sudden, "Sorry, you have to leave. We're selling the property." I told them, "As long as you pay the rent, you're going to be here." And then my brother says, "How long do they want?" They wanted 10 years because it takes three or four years for the cactus to grow up and they, in between, they raise strawberries, jicama, I don't particularly care for that, domatia, things of that. They sell wholesale to the fruit yards, uh, fruit stands, I'm sorry, to the flea markets, to restaurants, taco trucks, and also they told me to Costless Market. Well, I went to Costless Market and looked at their Nopalas. They're coming from Lancaster. If we want to keep agriculture here in this county, I think we need to, you gentlemen, need to look at that particular aspect, that particular ordinance where they have to lease the entire parcel. To me, that makes no sense. You know, you're not going to improve agriculture by doing that and maybe modify it by saying you can lease everything except for the buildings and the buildings around there. That's it, gentlemen. Any questions by any chance?
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Good meeting you.
Nice meeting you.
We saw Hoppy September. He was at our 55th High School reunion.
Wow, that's good. That's great.
Yeah, 55.
All right. Any others like to make comment?
How you doing, man?
Good. How are you?
My name is Steve Coburn. I'm...
Hold on, Mr. Evatt.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm Steve Coburn. I'm doing home care. The lady I take care for, she worked 25 years for the county and she got transferred to the Agriculture Department. She took the shots for COVID. They insisted on, she wound up having a stroke and they had nothing for her from that place, zero. So without this program, I wouldn't have been able to take care of her like I do and she probably would have lost her house, been in a home somewhere or something, another homeless person. It's good to see Mr. Condon. Like I told you before, your grandpa was my preacher and a good man. I trust you guys.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, I just want to, he told me one time, he'd rather pull people together than push them together. And that's what we're here for, not to push yourself, honey, but make you guys understand and maybe you can find somebody that's taking care of somebody and go take a look at what they do. It takes extra, too. We guys spend extra time. I don't get paid for it because, you know, when you start taking care of somebody, they become close and, and you can't walk away from them when they need you, you know? So I, I wish you guys to think about it and maybe we do know somebody that's doing home and care and taking care of somebody, take time to check them out and see what it's really about. It can be tough sometimes and, but it's a blessing in the end. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Steve. Any others like to make public comment about items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we're going to close public comment and move to the consent calendar. Before the board takes any action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? I have one for item B12. Any supervisors like... Mr. McMurtry, you want?
Thank you, once, once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, now, this item is, happens to be from the probation department, but I expect over the years, maybe it's already happened, you'll probably get a lot of requests for budget items for artificial intelligence for the various departments. The latest promotion of art, I actually have some expertise in this, so that's why I'm sharing this. My concern at the time was with the budget constraints, it is very tempting to look upon artificial intelligence, especially this large data model basis type that have the uncanny ability to write reports that, that, you know, oh, great, you know, we can cut back on personnel or not replace personnel because this is a big labor-saving device. It certainly can be, but I, I do want to advise you that this technology has a lot of weird glitches. You may have heard they have hallucinations. If the probation department or whatever department has a certain format for the report, the AI may not follow that format. There's, there can be some very serious consequences if the probation department is, does not have, keep an eye on the AI. So for a short term, I would recommend, please have the probation department, whoever else wants to purchase AI software, that they need to keep an eye on it for a while until they know, that trusts that it's doing the right job. I think this, since we're talking about probation, this does, this does affect, you know, people under that department and, you know, we want our paper work, work to be accurate and correct. So you guys may already know this, but I just want to warn you, we're not there where we can just trust the machines to do things and I'm a living example of that today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bring it back to the board. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I would. Okay, and I, I suppose you have the police department and the cameras.
Don't mind, right? It would save a lot of time for the police department and they're wearing cams these days and I'm wondering why they're writing reports when everything's there. AI would work great for that because we have the video to back it up, so we wouldn't have to watch it over as much as he did because we have the video. Now, why don't all the reports just come off that? AI would save a lot of money in reports and a lot of time for the Sheriff's Department and the police departments, now wouldn't you think? Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Evatt. All right. What's your two approve?
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Unanimous.
Moving on to...
Moving on to public hearing. Public hearing to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval of general plan amendment and rezon application number PLN 2024-0100. Gallo Glass Company requesting to amend the general plan designation of two parcels, totaling point six-four acres from industrial transition to industrial and the zoning designation from single-family residential R1 to Plan Development PD to allow for Department of a stormwater drainage basin serving PD 373 located north of Tenaya Avenue between Santa Rita and South Santa Cruz avenues in the Modesto area and adoption of a negative declaration. Planning and community development. Kristin Anaya, Angela Freitas.
Good morning, Chair Condit, Supervisors, CEO Hayes, and County Council Boz. My name is Kristin Anaya, Senior Planner, here to present the general plan amendment and rezon application for Gallo Glass Company. So this is a request to amend the general plan designation of two parcels from industrial transition to industrial and the zoning designation from single-family residential to plan development to allow for the development of a stormwater drainage basin, which will serve a glass storage facility, which has already been permitted to develop under PD 373 on the adjacent parcels. The zero-point-six acre project site consists of two parcels under Gallo ownership in the airport neighborhood in the sphere of influence of the city of Modesto. The project site has a general plan designation of industrial transition and a zoning designation of single-family residential. The project site is surrounded by the Tuolumne River and the existing Gallo Glass Company campus to the south, Dry Creek, Gallo Glass Company, and ENJ Gallo Winery Campus to the west, Mono Park, Yosemite Boulevard, and Single Family Residential Development to the north, a bike path, single-family and multifamily residential development, a church, and the Modesto City County Airport to the east, and the city of Modesto to the northwest and south. The project site fronts on county-maintained Santa Cruz Avenue, surrounded by vacant parcels under Gallo ownership to the north and west and two single-family residential parcels to the south, one of which is under Gallo ownership. The project site is currently vacant with the exception of one unoccupied single-family dwelling and accessory structures, which are proposed to be demolished before onset of the use. The project consists of adding two parcels to the Gallo Glass Company warehouse facility, which was approved under General Plan Amendment and Rezone Number PLN 2023-166 by the Board of Supervisors on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, to allow the development of a glass storage facility on a footprint of twenty-nine contiguous parcels. The project footprint of the 2023 approved project is outlined in blue, zoned as Plan Development PD 373, with the proposed project site associated with the current request in red. The 2023 approved project permits the development of a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot warehouse for the storage of palletized shrink-wrapped glass pavement and a stormwater drainage facility serving the site. The facility is approved but has not yet been constructed. The project site associated with the 2023 project is outlined in red and the approved basin location is in blue. The subject project request involves adding two parcels to the project facility footprint shown in red to allow for relocation of the stormwater basin facility serving the site. No other modifications to the approved development access, vehicle or employee trips, or hours of operation are proposed. The basin is requested to be relocated in order to allow for improved vehicle circulation within the site. All conditions associated with the original plan development 373 are proposed to be carried over and will apply to the present project if approved. So one issue during, identified during project processing was a letter received from the Valley Improvement Projects in response to the project's initial study referral. They expressed concerns with the county's general noticing and outreach process, indicating that it's inadequate in order to provide adequate consultation with the surrounding communities, and expressed concerns related to the facility consisting of approximately five acres of impervious development and pavement contributing to urban heat island effect. They also expressed concerns with respect to air pollution being emitted from the facility and noise and light pollution. Regarding noticing requirements, the project exceeded standard noticing procedures with notices being sent to landowners and residents or tenants within three hundred feet of the project site. With respect to air pollution, the 2023 approved General Plan Amendment rezon quantified criteria air pollutants and provided an assessment of the health risk to nearby sensitive receptors from emissions and toxic air contaminants generated during construction and operation. Both studies indicated that the project had a less-than-significant impact on air quality and health risk. Light pollution is addressed via requirement applied to PD 373 as well. Additionally, a neighbor located north of the project site, north of Mono Drive, also called to express concerns about dumping, maintenance, and encampment issues in the neighborhood and expressed concerns whether they would somehow be forced to sell their property to Gallo developing additional properties in the neighborhood. Staff verified that they would not be compelled to sell as any part of the project. The project was evaluated for consistency with the general plan, including the land use elements amendment criteria, proposed plan development designation, and the land use elements industrial transition and sphere of influence policies. The analysis found that the project's proposed plan development designation would be appropriate for the proposed development, that based on the city's support and application of the standards, the sphere of influence policies have been met, and that the proposed project being contiguous with existing industrial facilities would make it appropriate for re-designation to industrial. In terms of the zoning consistency, the new plan development zoning designation will be consistent with the proposed industrial general plan designation. Development standards for PD 373 related to landscaping, lighting, building height, and setbacks will also be applied. These standards are further incorporated into the development standards outlined in exhibits of this staff report. Ultimately, staff's review found that the project would be consistent with both the county's general plan and zoning ordinance. Pursuant to CEQA, an initial study was circulated to interested parties and responsible agencies for review and comment, and a negative declaration has been prepared for approval. The initial study was amended to clarify the project parcels associated with the development request. However, no circulation was required due to the ad being clarifying in nature. Conditions of approval reflecting the referral responses have been placed on the project as well. So the project was considered at the April third, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. During the public hearing, one individual spoke in favor of the project and no individual spoke in opposition. The applicant's representative, Drew Leyland, spoke in favor of the project, responding to the correspondence received during project review, stating he is available and dedicated to responding to neighborhood concerns related to site maintenance, including picking up dumped materials upon notification. He also clarified that the project is infill development and represents a significant consolidation project, bringing glass storage closer to existing Gallo facility campus and reducing off-site glass storage locations, which will significantly reduce traffic traveling county roads for glass pickup and drop off. At the close of public hearing, Commissioner Sabala inquired about the county and Gallo's provision of bilingual translation for Spanish-speaking individuals, to which both the county and Gallo representative affirmed that they are able to provide Spanish translation as needed. Commissioner Huff inquired about whether the basin could be dual-use to serve the surrounding neighborhoods recreationally. The Gallo's representative indicated it was posed a safety risk due to the grade and potential drowning risk, and consequently, it would be rocked and fenced in rather than improved in turf. Additionally, it was clarified that the neighbor who expressed concerns about the project is not a resident of the immediately contiguous or adjacent parcels adjacent to the project site. Ultimately, on a vote of eight to zero, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve the project. Therefore, staff recommends the board adopt Recommendations one through six and the agenda item, including findings regarding environmental review, the amended initial study, and the proposed General Plan Amendment and rezon, introducing, waiving, the reading, and adopting an ordinance for a new plan development, and finally, project approval. And that concludes my presentation. The staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Kristin. Any questions from supervisor? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I haven't seen any written comments. And so we're going to open up public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish, wish to provide public comment on this item?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Drew Leyland with Gallo. And I just wanted to make myself available to all of you for any additional questions. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any others like to provide public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any last-minute comments or motion.
Motion approved?
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on to the next public hearing. Public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend existing fees for the Agricultural Commissioner, Linda Pimple. Morning, Linda.
There we go.
All right, our technical difficulties are gone now, so let's get started.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, Honorable Board, honorable members of our board, CEO Hayes, County Council Boz. Thank you for this opportunity today for me to present on the, our proposed 2025 fee changes.
Put that mic a little closer.
A little bit better? Is that, is that better?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right. All right, so today I am presenting to, two major changes. One is going to be in relation to our department-weighted labor rate. And the other is going to be a fee change for our farm labor contractor registration. Okay, so our current weighted labor rate is a hundred and ten dollars an hour. For our overtime rate, it's a hundred and sixty dollars an hour. We are proposing to raise them to a hundred and thirteen dollars per hour for our regular rate and a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour for our overtime rate. In comparison to our other counties, in the comparable counties, the comparable county average is ninety-three-point-two-five dollars per hour or a hundred and thirty-one-point-seven dollars per hour for the overtime rate. However, in comparison to our neighbors to the north and to the south, Merced has a hundred and eighteen-point-seven, a hundred and eighteen dollars and seventeen cents per regular hour rate or two hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-four cents for the overtime rate versus San Joaquin, which is a hundred and thirty-three-point-six-five dollars per hour regular rate or a hundred and fifty-three-point-nine-two overtime rate. So our rate is pretty comparable with them. Regular rate, which we hardly ever, if any, do overtime rate, our regular rate is still under our neighbor, our neighbors.
Linda, how does it, overtime, sorry. Over here, yeah. I know, it's hard when somebody starts talking, you're always trying to figure out where the voice is coming from. How does the overtime rate, at what point does that kick in? Where does that, like, after?
That kicks in outside of our regular work hours. Yeah, so in some cases, we need to go to do FIDOS early in the morning. And it's primarily Fido sanitary certi, it's primarily Fido sanitary certificates. So if they need us there early, early in the morning, or if they need us there late in the afternoon, outside of our regular business hours. But we do all that we can to work and encourage folks to be able to do as mu, as much during our regular business hours.
Perfect. Okay, good. Sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no. Thank you for the question. Okay, so for these fees. So for sanitary certificates, with the fee change, what it's going to equate for our industry is they're currently paying on average eighty-four dollars a certificate. This would be a dollar twenty increase to eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. That would bring in eleven thousand, a hundred and eighteen dollars of revenue. I do need to make a correction here. I caught this while I was up there waiting. The numbers that you see here for our, for the colony inspection, those I need to make correction to, and I'll read those to you and I'll send that to the clerk to, to fix when she publishes this. But the actual number, these, for whatever reason, they didn't get corrected from last year. But our current average for colony strength inspections is actually four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. It was three hundred and sixty-nine seventy-five last year. So current is actually four hundred and sixty-seven fifty. With the proposed change, it would go up by a little over twelve dollars to four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. But the total revenue that we expect to see as an increase is, is correct at two hundred and forty-three. So my apologies for that. Certified farmers markets, so they currently are certified, certified producers are currently paying on average a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents per inspection. That would increase to a hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-two cents per inspection, bring in about two hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-three cents of additional revenue. Certified farmers markets would go from two hundred and seventy-five dollars per cert, certificate to two hundred and eighty-two and fifty cents per certificate. That would bring in about twenty-two fifty of increased revenue. Industrial hemp would go from three hundred and eighty-five per inspection to three hundred and ninety-five and fifty cents per inspection. That would be about twenty-eight dollars per increased revenue. We've only had one, so there's not a lot of people who have industrial hemp in the county, if at all. For non-commercial devices, that would be a hundred and ten dollars per inspection to a hundred and thirteen dollars per inspection. That would bring in about sixty dollars of revenue. So everything done and said, what we're asking for with the weighted labor rate changes, we're looking at eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents is what we would anticipate with the increase in, in the weighted labor rate. The other change that we are proposing is for our farm labor contractor registration fee. So every year, farm labor contractors are required to register with my office. And the fees are based off of what it costs. We can charge fees based off of what it costs to do the administration, processing, and issuing proofs of registration. Our current fee is twenty-five dollars and it hasn't been changed since two thousand and seven. We did a, we did a time study through this winter time. And what we've determined is it takes, on average, seventeen minutes of processing time for farm labor contract registration. So that's how we came up with the thirty-two dollars is we applied that time to the hundred and thirteen-dollar proposed fee weighted labor rate. Our comparison counties, the average for farm labor contractor registrations is thirty dollars and thirty-eight cents. Our immediate neighbors, Merced, charges thirty dollars for farm labor contractors. San Joaquin charges thirty-five dollars for farm labor contractor registration. What we would anticipate with this change would be nine hundred and seventeen dollars of revenue for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. So in summary, what we would anticipate between the far, weighted labor rate, which would be eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, and farm labor contractor registration fee increases, which would be nine hundred and twelve dollar, nine hundred and seventeen dollars, excuse me, we would anticipate a total revenue impact of twelve thousand, six hundred dollars and thirty-three cents fee, re, revenue increase. So staff recommendations is that we conduct a hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an, of an ordinance to amend existing fees for the Agricultural Commissioner. So that's my presentation. Thank you so much. Is there any questions that I can help address?
Thank you, Linda. Any questions from the supervisor?
No questions. Just thanks, Linda, for the presentation. And, and I know you look at those numbers and you think, "Gosh, just a little adjustment. Why are we even messing?" But this is what we want. We want us, rather than wait ten years and it to be a giant number, we want to just do this kind of incremental each year and kind of stay ahead of it. So I appreciate you doing this. And everybody's been briefed on this, I know. And, and we're just trying to cover our costs. And unfortunately, costs keep going up, and this is what we have to do. But thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Last year, we had some pretty big changes, and I got that message very loud and clear. So I understand the importance of this to our, to the people, to our agricultural community and the people that we serve. So I appreciate the message, and I'll be following suit as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Any other questions or comments? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I haven't seen any written comments, so we'll go ahead and open up public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on this item? Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you. I just have a question for Commissioner Pinfold. I'm just curious, do you know off the top of your head how many certified farmers markets we have in this county? If not, is it on a website somewhere, or can you give me the figure maybe next week? I assume you'll be here next week.
I can definitely give you the figure. Off the top of my head, I don't know. It's not very many, it's like three, but I can give you that exact figure.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any others? All right, I'm going to bring it back, close the public hearing, and bring it back for a motion to approve.
So motion to approve, including the changes in the presentation that you guys are going to get.
I got a first?
Second.
I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up is a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend existing fees for building permit services, planning, and community development. Angela Freitas and Danny Ferrera.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, members of the board, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Boz. I'm Angela Freitas, the Director of Planning and Community Development. And with me this morning for the building permit services and the planning services items are Danny Ferrera, our Chief Building Official, and Carmel Morello, our Deputy Director of Finance and Operations. Building Permit Services handles the building administration for the unincorporated area with oversight for the county's one-stop-shop permitting process, which includes the calculation and collection of the county's public facility fees. Building Permit Services is 100% funded by fees, with 90% of those fees being valuation-based and 10% being flat-rate fees. The last update to the fee schedule was done in May of last year, and it was, and the updates since 2020 have been based on Consumer Price Index, CPI. This year, we are proposing a 7.85% fee increase for all valuation and flat-rate fees, based on a projected CPI increase of 2.7, and a 5.5% increase in costs that have exceeded adopted fee amendments over the last five years. Valuation-based fees are determined for individual projects based on the value of construction. That factors in square footage of the construction and the gross area of the building, as it is applied to a building permit multiplier, which covers the expected amount of the budget that's going to be paid for by that building permit revenue. The building valuation data, the BVD, is published by the International Code Council, is used to determine the value of construction, and it is based on the market value averages of construction costs throughout the United States. Currently, we're using the August 2020 BVD. No change is being proposed. The proposed increases would be applied to the valuation ranges used to calculate the fees. The table before you shows the existing and proposed fees for some of our common permit types. In the area of structures, you could see single-family dwellings. The high end would be an increase of about $477, and on the low end, for structures for a 1,500-square-foot garage would be about $119. For systems, the HVAC systems on the high end would be seeing about a $20 increase, and on the low end, water heaters at about a $12 increase. We have some targeted fee increases that we're proposing with the intent to capture actual costs. Those would be an increased hourly plan review rates from $111 to $135.50, mobile home inspection fees from $360 to $480, cannabis enforcement inspection fees from $245 to $450, and the addition of a $2,500 flat-rate fee for accessory dwelling units that are less than 1,000 square feet in size. And that would include up to 13 inspections and $300 for the permitting of mechanical plumbing and electrical systems. If additional costs are incurred, there would be the ability to charge additional inspection and reinspection fees. In preparing these fees, we did do a comparative fee survey. We looked at the county's eight comparative counties, Fresno, Kern, Madera, Merced, Monterey, Sacramento, San Joaquin, and Tulare, along with the cities of Ceres, Modesto, Oakdale, Patterson, and Turlock. We were able to get information from most of the jurisdictions except for Madera, Merced, and Turlock. We were not able to get their information. The survey focused on the common construction permit types typically utilized by the county to show the impact of proposed fee amendments, and those are captured in attachment three of your board agenda item. We found that the survey showed that the county's fees are in line with the jurisdiction surveyed, with some fees higher and others lower. This next slide kind of shows the high end of the fees, along with the low end of the fees, and the county's proposed fees. As you can see, the higher fees are generally Monterey County. However, the cities of Ceres and Patterson do have some of the higher fees with regards to water heater, electrical service, and rerooft. And then the lower fees are generally in the South Valley area, Tulare, Madera, and Kern County. General factors in considering, in considering and comparing fees is if the jurisdiction's fees are based on actual costs, or if they're being subsidized by general fund, and then the varying different staffing levels, salary levels, and indirect overhead costs that go into the operations for service delivery. The county's building permit services is 100% funded by fees and does not receive any general fund to cover costs of operations. Notification of these proposed fee amendments were provided to persons and firms known as regular applicants seeking building permit services, along with the Farm Bureau, the California Building Industry Association, and we have them posted in our lobby. To date, we have received no correspondence or any communications with regards to the fees. The recommendation before you is to conduct a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend the existing fees for building permit services. If these fees were to be approved, the proposed fees would become effective July 19. That concludes my report. If there's any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions for Angela? Comments?
Let's go.
All right. Okay, so now I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I haven't seen any written reports. And open up public comment. Any public like to make comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back and close the public hearing.
I was just thinking, as I saw the cannabis fee pop up, do we do, this may not be, this may be a sheriff's issue, but do we do smoke shop inspections? Because I've seen, we do not, because I've seen in Fresno and in Modesto, every time they go there, they're selling cannabis products, and it's, I just keep getting more and more complaints. So, but that's not, we do not do those inspections.
The planning department does not.
Is that code enforcement? Is that?
Code enforcement.
Okay. Thank you.
CEO Hayes, did you have?
Yeah, just on that topic, wanted to let the board know that we are taking a look at the recent ordinances that the city of Modesto passed, so we are taking a look at, because they've been ahead of us, I think, in terms of looking at the proliferation of smoke shops and what activities are occurring within those businesses. I've been in contact with the city manager's office a couple of times to learn more about what they've done, and we've got staff assigned looking at it right now.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
All right. I'm going to bring it back to the board for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Unanimous.
Moving on to the next one. Public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend the existing fees for planning services, planning and community development. Angela Freitas.
Same team, back up.
All right.
Planning services. Planning oversees land use entitlements, lot line adjustments, land subdivisions, Williamson Act administration, and has oversight with the review of alcohol beverage control license, business licenses, and building permits. As with the building service fees, they were last updated in May of last year, and they were based on, since 2018, they've been based on the Consumer Price Index. This year, we are proposing an increase of 5.5% for all flat-rate fees. This is based on projected 2.7 CPI and 3% increase in costs that have exceeded adopted fee amendments over the last seven years. No increase to deposit-based fees or new fees are being proposed. The increases range from about $2 to $267 per application. Some of the more common applications with lot line adjustments involving the Williamson Act, you would see an increase of $51. Parcel maps in the A2 General Agricultural Zoning District would see an increase of 221, and use permits could see an increase of $228. We are proposing some opportunities for some fee reductions by changing some flat-rate applications to deposit-based fees, and that would be the parcel maps in the A2 where they are exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, and time extensions. We're also looking for the opportunity to charge up to two hours of planning and zoning research when needed for verification letters for both single-family dwellings and all other uses, and this would be when we're dealing with a more complicated verification request. There is some fee schedule cleanup with regards to field inspections and site visits, and then we are consolidating and collapsing some of the different categories with parcel maps and use permits to make the fee schedule a little more streamlined and easier to read. Planning will continue to offer no-cost services in the area of pre-development meetings and having planners available daily for in-person phone and emails to address general inquiries with the goal that these services are to identify early any potential issues and to provide direction on the process and application needed for development. We also conducted a comparative fee survey for the planning fees, again, looking at the eight county, the eight comparative counties, and the cities of Ceres, Modesto, Oakdale, Patterson, and Turlock. In the case of planning services, we were able to get information from all of them with the exception of Merced. The survey focused on eight common application types, ranging in size from those handled at a staff level to those requiring a planning commission and/or board supervisor's action. And again, the survey showed that the county's fees are in line with jurisdictions surveyed, with some higher and others lower. Again, jurisdiction fees can base as to whether or not they're covering actual costs for all services, or if there's any general fund subsidy, and level of staffing, salary, and indirect costs that are associated. The county's planning services collect fees with the goal of recovering 100% of the application-related costs. When looking at the comparisons, a couple of things that we noted that are important to look at is the relationship between the deposits collected and the actual costs collected. For the county, we try to base the deposit on what we think is going to be the actual cost, but in some cases, clearly, the deposits are fairly low, so that's not the case. Where there's applications with two or more actions that may be charged multiple application fees, or some type of combination fee, some you've got single costs versus a cost range, in particular where there's a subdivision where they're adding a per-lot fee that reflects the nature of the request. And then a lot of the jurisdictions are charging a separate fee for preparation of environmental review, which makes the initial fee that they're charging for the request look fairly lower compared to ours, but when you then add on the fee that they are charging for the environmental review, we're pretty comparable with their fees, if not lower. Fees may also include other departments or may not include other departments. So in circulating these fees, we did provide notification, again, to persons and firms known to the department as regular representatives and applicants seeking planning services, along with the Farm Bureau, the BIA, and we posted it in our lobby. To date, we have received no comments or concerns with regards to the fees. The recommendation before you is to conduct a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend existing fees for planning services. And as with building service fees, if these are adopted, they would become effective July 19. If there's any questions, we're available.
All right. Any questions for Angela? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'm unaware of any written comments, and so we'll open up public comment. Does anybody have any comment on this agenda item? Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't want to say anything more, but it's kind of driving me nuts, both on this presentation and the last presentation. Why is Monterey included as a comparable county? It's geographically quite different, different crops, different property costs. I'm just, I can't help, but I have to ask.
I'm going to look to our CEO, because it's, the county's eight comparable counties, and I'm not exactly sure.
No worries. So we have, in prior years, done analysis of all counties in California to determine those most comparable to Stanislaus, and there are some counties like Monterey that you might conventionally think not much to compare between us and them, but when you do look at many of the underlying demographics, nature of their economics, and so forth, they actually do present as a strong comparison to Stanislaus, or at least in the top 10 of comparison counties. In our community, we select eight counties to compare against, and Monterey is one of those eight counties. So you'll see in county surveys from multiple departments and multiple forums that they generally will look at Monterey as one of the eight counties.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ron. Any others? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for approval.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
And I will second.
And I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next up, discussion. Approval to consider and adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire real property or interest in real property by eminent domain for the North County Corridor Project. Parcel owner, Olive Lane Properties LLC assesses parcel number 014-001-002. Public Works, David Lehman. Morning, Dave.
Morning. Chairman Condit. Board supervisors. CEO Hayes. Council Boz. Boz, good morning, everyone. Boz, Boz, whoever you are there, Tom.
Maybe it was my involvement in this.
With me this morning is our outside counsel, Artun Shiverdian, from Nosman, and also brought Deputy Director Sam Schrumpf. Both are available for comments. This is for Olive Lane Property, for North County Corridor, Phase 1. The agenda for this is, we're going to give you a project description, overview of the process, and discussion of the individual property, Olive Lane Properties. And here's the project limits for NCC. This board has already awarded this contract. We're going to begin construction shortly, in the next month or so. Contractor's actually doing some clearing at where the RV trailers and their construction trailers are going to be, it's on Clarabelle Road, 4601. And here's the project limits. You can see it's a sliver tape. It's about 7,000 square feet and just a bit of taper widening for Claus Road as it approaches Clarabelle Road. Project approvals to date, Caltrans approved the Sequin EBIT environment documents and adopted the route adoption on May 22, 2020. These actions confirmed the alignment of Phase 1B, which created and approved the NCC project. Public interest and necessity, project approvals to date, the NCC project will improve the regional network circulation, relieve existing traffic congestion, reduce traffic delay, and accommodate future traffic on State Route 108. It supports the efficient movement of goods and services and enhances traffic safety. Greatest public good and least private injury. Through rigorous environmental study and public outreach, NCC has been designed to maximize the benefits to the public at large while minimizing impacts to private property owners. A thorough analysis regarding the need for each property interest was conducted in the project's planning stages. The project team has worked diligently to minimize the need for property acquisitions. Alternative 1B, which is planned and located in the manner that is most compatible with providing the greatest public good and least private injury. Key resolution of necessity findings required. The public interest and necessity require the NCC Phase 1 final EIR/ EIS approved May 22, 2020. The project is planned in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The subject properties are necessary for the project, and an offer has been made to the parcel owners to be acquired. Here's what we've got with this. We have an agreement with this property owner. There's a couple lien holders that won't sign off, and so proceeding by eminent domain will allow the county to name parties who may have an interest in the property in the condemnation lawsuit, allowing county to clear title while ensuring the current owners receive just compensation for the taking. And staff recommends, find that the public interest and necessity require the North County Corridor project. Find that the project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Find that the subject property, APN 014-001-002, Olive Lane Properties, describing the resolutions attached to the staff report are necessary for the project. Find that the offer required by Section 7267.2 of the Government Code has been made to the parcel owners of the properties to be acquired. Adopt this resolution of necessity in the form attached to the staff report as attachment 1. Authorize County Council to initiate eminent domain proceedings to acquire the subject property. And staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Dave? Any questions for Dave?
No questions, just, Dave talked us all about this before separately, and, you know, that we take these things very seriously anytime we're doing something like this, but just the fact that we have an agreement between the property owner and us is, is, is what we want, and then work out the lien holder thing, and that's what this will do. So, thank you, guys, for doing this.
Are there more properties to be acquired for North County Corridor, or is this, are we coming to the end? Do you know?
There's a few that we're still working through the process. Artin knows how many we've got that are still in court.
Yeah, we do have some supervisor that are still in litigation. We're trying to work things out, but we don't have any others that are going to be coming before the board that I'm aware of for additional resolutions.
Okay. That, I guess that was more, and I know that we're still.
This should be the last one for NCC.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to hear. All right. Any other questions? All right. I'm gonna open up public hearing, or public comment. Excuse me, anybody like to make a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Approval to consider and adopt a resolution of necessity to acquire real property or interest in real property by eminent domain by the, for the Quincy Road over Turlock Irrigation Lateral Number Three Bridge Replacement Project assessors parcel number 073-001-003, Public Works, David Lehman. Welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Condit. And we're gonna be talking about these three parcels. We'll give you the project description, an overview of the process, and a discussion of the individual properties. Owners are Edwin H. Smith &amp; Sons, Roger Smith Trustee, Patricia J. Smith Trustee, and Beverly J. Smith Trustee, and the other parcel is Edwin Smith Family LLC, Roger E. Smith Trustee, Patricia Smith Trustee, Rick Dean Smith Trustee, and Janet Brownson Smith Trustee. And here's the project limits. It's Quincy Road at Taylor, and Roger Smith owns the bits to the northeast and, well, the south two bits, too. And so, here's a, here's a depiction of the right-of-way necessary to build this new bridge. One of the things we have to do is raise the, the new bridge a bit, get it out of the water and out of the TID canal, and so, we require a little more right-of-way than previously needed. And here's a picture. I'm not sure those wood rails would hold Patrice up if she leaned against it, and she's pretty tiny. They're, these, this bridge needs to be replaced. You can see they get knocked down all the time, and really, they're more of a visual guide to, hey, there's something there you shouldn't be in. It wouldn't hold back much, and so, it was fine for 1925, not so good for 2025. Any rate, here's the project approvals to date for these three parcels. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to California Code Regulations Title 14, Section 15302 as a replacement or reconstruction of existing structures and facilities. As such, the county filed a notice of exemption on February 26, 2021. The consent to common use between Stanislaus County and Turlock Irrigation District Lateral Number Three Bridge Replacement Project was approved by the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors December 12, 2023. The public interest and necessity project approvals. The Quincy Road Bridge, Quincy Road over Turlock Irrigation District Lateral Number Three Bridge Replacement Project will bring the Quincy Road Bridge up to current county and American Association of State Highway and Transportation official standards. It supports efficient movement of goods and services and enhances safety. The greatest public good and least private injury. The project has been designed to maximize the benefits to the public while minimizing impacts to private property owners. A thorough analysis regarding the need for each property interest was conducted in the project's planning stages. The project team has worked diligently to minimize the need for property acquisitions. The public interest and necessity requires this project. The project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. The subject properties sought to be acquired are necessary for the project, and the offer by Government Code, Section 7267.2, has been made to the owner of record, owners of record. An offer of just compensation has been made to the owners for the full fair market value of the property interest sought to be acquired, as determined by various appraisals. The county has attempted to engage the owners to reach a negotiated settlement. To date, a negotiated settlement has not been achieved. I think we're good on financial compensation. I think we're there. We have other issues that are hanging us up right now, contract matters. Staff recommends. Find that the public interest and necessity require the Quincy Road over Turlock Irrigation Lateral Number Three Bridge Replacement Project assessors parcel numbers as shown on the screen. Find that the project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Find that the interests in the property sought to be acquired and describing the attached resolution of necessity are necessary for the project. Find that the offer required by Section 7267.2 of the Government Code has been made to the parcel owners of the properties to be acquired. Adopt this resolution of necessity in the form attached to the staff report as attachment one, and authorize County Council to initiate eminent domain proceedings to acquire the subject property. And staff is available for questions. We're gonna continue to negotiate the terms of the contract with, with the owner. It's just, this is, the cost has gone up about 25, 30%. We spent two years in negotiations with this property owner, and it's, it's, we really wanna build this bridge this fall.
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead.
Is it okay if I give a quick history lesson?
Absolutely.
If that's okay for the board, not, so, quite some time ago, Berkeley was a single-lane road. If you go back to the initial picture, just, okay, so, no, no, the next one. That's Berkeley Road on the left-hand side. Berkeley was a single-lane, very dangerous road. I think back in 2010-ish, we paved it, very skinny two-lane road, but done up, it was a much improved road. So, we had to essentially get permission along the roadway and to do that, and then the water treatment plant, so that was the first conversation with Mr. Smith about just being able to take some of his land, and then the water treatment line that comes from the Tuolumne River, it comes down Berkeley, makes a left on Taylor, and essentially comes down Quincy right there. So, that's the exact alignment. And Mr. Smith owns pretty much all the properties on all corners there, and, and so, there's been a lot of construction, and it has affected his, and he's an extremely good farmer and doesn't like to be hassled with. So, we, we approached him some time ago, about two years ago, about, we needed to fix this bridge. It absolutely needs to be replaced, and he's been resistant because he believes there's another way that it can be done, and when we sit and always talk about the public interest and the least injury, you're talking about a strip of land, I don't even know what the total take is, but it can't be more than what I, I was just trying to look it up. I know, I should've known that someone's gonna give me that number. It's pretty, 15, 15 feet.
Total of 9,850 square feet or .22 acres.
.22 acres, but it happens, he owns all, essentially all four corners, not four corners, there's only three there, but owns them all. So, he's been very vocal about trying to do something different, and again, we come back to the same conversation of greatest, you know, public interest and the least private injury, and we think we've found something, and we have to move forward with this because it's a dangerous bridge. Every time they put up a new railing, the wood railing, I see on Facebook, how long is this gonna last? Two weeks, and it truly is, just a couple of weeks. So, we're gonna widen it, and which, which will make it safer, and then the turn radius becomes a little bigger with a wide bridge because someone might take that road with some sort of truck. So, again, I support moving forward with this. I think it will, because .22 acres, it's, you know, regardless of what you paid for it, it will be justly compensated, and I think the, his argument is gonna be that it's, you know, it's impacting him and him only, and I, and I get it. We've had the conversations. We're always very sensitive to doing runs or takes, but this is an issue where we have to move forward at this point. So, I appreciate all your time and attention because this one's taken a long time.
Chris Beatty did run out this morning with a tape, and it looks like his line of alfalfa will still be five feet off the easement, so it doesn't even look like we'll be in his alfalfa, so.
Yeah, he's got a setback, and there's a TID easement there. There's other things in play, but it won't affect his field, but again, if you ever watched The Man Farm, you'd understand why he doesn't wanna be bothered, and he does an exceptional job.
Thank you, Vito. Any others?
It sounds like you guys made every effort you could to try to, to make this work, and sometimes you just get to a spot where you, like you said, the greater good has to happen, and, but I know it hasn't been for lack of effort for everybody involved. I know, you've met with him several times, so, anyway.
Again, just to bring the board, you know, up to speed, I actually had a conversation with opposing counsel on, on Friday, and I think we're sort of on a path to try to resolve the issues that we have with the language proposed in a purchase and sale agreement, because that's really where we're, the hangups are. I've been told that a revised purchase and sale agreement is coming this week, but we do need to proceed with this because we are scheduled to try to award a contract by October, and in the event we're not able to resolve the purchase and sale agreement language, at the very least, we wanna be able to have possession of the property to get construction started, and then we can deal with the language in the, in the ensuing months. But we continue to work with them.
Thank you for that. All right. And I don't, I'm not aware of any written comments regarding this agenda item, so I'm gonna go, go ahead and open up public comment. Anybody have public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back.
I will make a motion to approve.
I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Moving on to correspondence, acknowledged receipt of the correspondence and refers recommended on the agenda. Board of Supervisor reports.
I just wanna make sure everyone realizes that the former councilwoman Pam Franco has been patiently sitting through this entire meeting. Thanks for coming, Pam. Appreciate it.
Good to see you, Pam. Go ahead, Jan.
Let's have a, a quick update regarding our situation out in Diablo Grande. Last week, I was able to convene a meeting with Governor Newsom's office, as well as a couple of the board members of the Western Hills Water District. We met with Abigail Solis, who is the Central Valley Representative for Governor Newsom, and it was a, a very productive meeting. We met for approximately an hour, and Michael and Mark, who are representatives for the Water District, were able to explain to her in detail of how we got to this point, and we just, we conveyed to the governor's office that we're hoping that he may weigh in to Kern to see if there's a possibility of an extension. We asked for a minimum of a year, just with all the efforts that are, of being made. A year at minimum is probably the most realistic timeline in order to try to get a short-term and a potentially long-term deal in dealing with that water situation out there in Diablo Grande. We did convene our third meeting with the irrigation districts that Supervisor Withrow was a part of, and I appreciate his support throughout this entire process. We convened that meeting yesterday, and again, we're just gonna continue the dialogue and working with the Western Hills Water District so that we can try to remedy a solution. Again, we were given a deadline of June 30th of when Kern would be potentially shutting off the water, and over 2,000 residents are potentially impacted by that. I do wanna thank Assemblyman Juan Alan Nies's office. I've been in constant communication with Chief of Staff Josh Whitfield, and I know that they have been in front of the Kern Water District as well regarding this matter. So, I do appreciate all the efforts. It's been a trying time, and it's certainly a dire situation, so again, thank you again throughout the process.
Thank you, Chance. Go ahead, man.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanna report, a few of us got the opportunity to attend CSAC's yearly legislative annual meeting. Supervisor, our chairman Buck Condit, Supervisor Kieza, Supervisor Condit, we're all there alongside CEO Hayes, Assistant CEO Tina Rocha, and our PIO Legislative Director.
Krista Lucas.
Krista Lucas.
I apologize.
I, I didn't see her, that's why. I know who she is. But it was a good meeting. We got to learn a lot, obviously, whenever we go to these meetings, you get to have conversations with other county leaders and other electeds to talk about the issues that are pertaining to their counties that sometimes can be throughout the state, but one thing of note was, I chair a committee there for GFA, which is Government Finance and Accounting Accountability, and our, one of our panelists was our esteemed CEO talking about the 2030 project, and there was other counties that also talked about projects that they're doing to bring good livable wages and, you know, adding to their economic development for their region, and I might have a little bit of bias, but I think ours was the best performance. People were very envious, asked a lot of questions. There was somebody from the governor's office that kinda oversees, from GoBiz, that oversees how the funding gets allocated to these types of projects, and he seemed thoroughly impressed by the presentation. So, it was a proud moment. We had good representation at CSAC, and it was good to see that what we're doing in this county resonates with people up and down the state. Thank you.
So, I just wanna add on, the reason that people are impressed is because of collaboration between three counties, San Joaquin, Merced, and Stanislaus, which is not normal. And then the other thing that was good about CSAC is the League of Cities held their legislative conference at the same time, and it allows folks, especially if you stay up there, I didn't stay up there, but to, to sit and figure out what other cities are doing, too, because we're, we're so myopic, we're looking at what our cities are doing, and we're not paying attention to what other good ideas are out there, so.
Okay, just a couple things. First, I, sorry I didn't go to that, I actually wasn't invited, they asked me not to. It's okay. I'm all, I'm all right with it. So, no, actually, on Saturday, I just wanted to talk about, I attended a graduation ceremony for a group, group called The Men's Group that is put together by a bunch of individuals, Dr. John Walker, one of our former, our former doctors here for the county. It leads this, helped lead this, and it's an organization that, that supports African-American kids in high school and helping them get ready to head off to college or trade school or whatever it was. It was out at the King Kennedy Center, and just a great presentation, some good speakers came and talked, and then the, they had awards that they gave to each one of the kids for, for various things, speech contests, and they, they have them get involved in the stock market to learn about the stock market. Anyway, just a great program and great results, and they had alumni come back who had graduated from and gone off to college and, and been very successful, so I'm very proud of, just to be there, and I just wanna plug Dr. Walker, who was very much active and involved in his retirement in this. It was, it was a great thing to be at.
Also, speaking of Saturday, like every year, love Stanislaus County, love Modesto. I got to partake in the festivities here and love where they kickoff in Modesto. Again, well-attended, even though the weather was, you know, a little bit of rain, but that didn't hold anybody back. I think they mentioned they had 8,000 volunteers with numerous projects across the county, and Krista Lucas's office was there to take pictures.
I wanna tell what I think is a funny story normally.
Next year, they wrote down the same, on the same date as always?
I, I think they keep it pretty consistent. It's the last Saturday of April when they do this.
Danair had their, Love Danair, and it was, it was advertised that normally you have community cleanups where people go out and pick up trash in alleys, and so they, Talk Scavenger dropped off two of the large containers, and when I showed up to open up the ceremonies and looked down the road, there were about 50 trucks lined up with, with trash, or garbage. It wasn't trash, but, you know, the beds and other things. They ended up filling six of the largest containers, and then they piled, and yesterday they had to bring four more out, so 10 containers. The mistake was made is that we're not supposed to be a free dump day, but anyways, I, I told them we were gonna help out, so, for a community cleanup. I know that Chance has done that many, many times, so.
All right. Good story. Yeah, it was. It was a busy week with CSAC, and then coming back to Love Riverbank, Love Oakdale, had hit both of those places up and got to address the crowd, the people that had projects that they were going to do. So, yeah, it was a busy week. Also, attended a fundraiser for, without permission. It was a great event. They raised a lot of money, so it was, it was a busy week. Legislative and fiscal management.
Thank you. So, thank you for the kind words about the presentation at CSAC. It was really nice to be invited to share some of the work that we're doing here in Stanislaus County. That same work, the work that we've done to expand childcare access, just wanted to recognize, this week has been recognized recognize, this week has been recognized by the National Association of Counties. So, our county, along with the nurture nonprofit program that we're working with, has been highlighted in a wonderfully written article that is sent out to all counties across the United States about the good work going on here. So we're very excited for that, proud of that. I also want to recognize that we have submitted our county's community project funding requests to Congressman Gray's office last week, and those members have returned from their two-week congressional recess yesterday to begin working on the budget reconciliation process. So, we'll look forward to potentially hearing some good news about the county's request there, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Before I adjourn, Deputy Flores, thank you for your overwatch, and then we're going to get a closed session.
Yes, we have closed session this morning. Our first closed session is conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, Subdivision D4. We have one case to consider. Second item is conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, Subdivision D2 or 3. We have one matter to discuss. The facts and circumstances to be discussed retain in a letter dated November 8, 2024, from the sheriff to the Board of Supervisors requesting the Board appoint conflict counsel regarding the sheriff's disagreement with the consolidated emergency dispatch agencies' selection of dispatch software. Sheriff's letter is available from the clerk of the board. That appropriate for public comment.
Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.